So, some kind of people taking names away that weren't embedded.
Right, exactly.
There's certain things that shouldn't happen over an email or a text because it can get dangerous.
Yes.
We had a committee meeting for forestry, Lauren, I don't know if you got the email. But I just wanted to bring up the speed on it so you're not surprised. So essentially, Lauren has some roads to be compared with. It's in the back of here. He always tries really, we talk about this before we go down. So, he doesn't have any time left, but last year he put twenty thousand dollars in his best general. He's carrying that over this year. Expecting some. This year he had twenty thousand. There's thirty thousand left there. He's identified thirty thousand dollars in his existing budget. Can he convert? But he's asking for a twenty-five thousand dollar supplement to pay the trip. And probably talking with the woman husband. That is other accounts. So I was planning on making that motion today. And I'll say for your committee recommends. If we stand on it. Unless you're at the speed of.
Yeah, yeah. And I would assume we came back and the forest income is just like an income balance or something.
And he, he peruses it for, he tends to be the big payment. So we can't very well say we can't spend it.
I actually, I'm very pressed. I'm really, I'm really proud of these. Addressing problems with the roads now, so I can move out later and take hold of those.
Thank you very much. It looks great. They were kind of pushed and challenged and they're not getting based on. So this is a pretty good job to save them. So I just want to make sure you were aware of that. That's, some slash dollars.
I did. I love doing that.
Yeah, yeah. Well, today I was coming out of the address. Well, I never like to say that committee recommends.
No. I think they're very, very, I'm talking about. And all of that stuff. Well, his mom lives here. We have it just about every day. She takes him to school. His mom's out of chains a little bit, so now she, two days a week where she can take him to school and take him out. But then, like she does that, she drops him at our house before she goes to work. Usually Friday, Tuesday.
Thank you.
Yeah, just make sure we're communicating. Ian's, Ian's had the call if he wasn't yet either.
Yeah, no, I understand.
And he said, no, I didn't see it through. Reply this.
No, I, I actually.
It's not as much fun as a lot of people.
Do you get texts?
Yes.
Okay.
Texts are. So if one of us calls up, we didn't hear from each other. For a few days, it's, you keep saying that. I'm nervous to call up.
For my divisions. Technology. I thought, yeah, some people just don't like them.
Yeah, exactly. And I'm okay with that. I understand.
I know people that refuse. They don't want anything with it, so.
I understand that, because it can be real intimidating.
Oh, yes, absolutely. Well, you know, just by understanding the. They get referred to as curries. Yesterday, because he's also, he's got a bad eye. So, his ophthalmologist is.
Hi. I'm good. And the council we have, well, so what if I call you back?
Yeah. Nice meeting you.
No, he won't be here.
Well, okay. No.
Yeah, I said last, well, from Monday to Wednesday, my daughter was. Mayor, Clint is here.
Oh.
Just FYI.
He must have run out to the restroom or something.
Thank you.
He was just here. Well, we were, we were lucky as we were going for it. We didn't hit. We were, we were huge fall there. Heard his falling going up town. JBL letting him on the phone. Never materialized. This is good. Well, we made it, we made it to Mary Bridge in an hour and five minutes.
I have.
Yeah, oh, yeah. And, versus coming back. Just, gap in tolerance, intolerance.
Did you call me back? I had a two five three number and I didn't pick it up because it didn't happen. And I thought, I wonder if that's.
It wasn't, no. I, I saw the message, said it wasn't necessary, so.
No, there wasn't, but I was. Feel like I always had a problem when I reached back.
You don't, you have. What are you worried about? Wants to see. Okay. She was, we saw Paul over about, I kind of remember.
Got a minute. Okay. 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 Well. Because they're not. Sixteen minutes.
On the dot. The phone is off.
I'm gonna call. My caller. Um, yeah. Give the, give the session. Three, four, five. Honey, I'm Mr. Johnson's speaker.
Is that Ian?
Yeah.
I don't have to remind you anymore then.
Did you solve your ecology block problem, or are you still?
No.
Wrestle it?
What's going on with the city right now?
Way too much.
So it is, six oh one, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. I, it's a little different because this is. The camera is close. Um, so this is a, this is a town hall, so more or less this is an opportunity for us to listen to other people. I am going to defer to, I'm not, we don't have really a structure. And, Councilman, I should also identify that Councilman Coke is present on, by phone. But, Councilman Carroll, you had asked for this meeting to be set up. So, I would defer to you as to what your goals were for this meeting.
My goal for this meeting would be to get some input as to where the community would like us to, what direction we'd like to take. To hear some other opinions and maybe other options even about the, about the restructuring format.
So, I want to be clear that we have not entered into any kind of process for restructuring the fire department. That has been raised by the councilmen. And, but we are at kind of a holding place because we have Chief Vance acting as chief for both departments. Pending a few things falling in line, I guess, as to next year. My hope is that we start a discussion next year as to structure. But, but because of all the, kind of the drama that occurred last month, there was a request for us to have this town hall. So I'm gonna open it up to all of, whoever wants to ask a question or share a comment. And all I would ask is you identify your name so I can just keep track of it for the record. Is there anybody that would like to start? Oh, I'm sorry. Either side of you. Why don't you go ahead, Rick? Mr. Harrington is sitting down, so.
My name is Rick Watkins, I live at two thirty-one North Sylvia Street, Pompano.
Is that better, Sean?
All right. First of all, I'd like to thank you guys for having this meeting and allowing the community and its citizens and representatives from the fire department to give input on this potential subject. I think there's nothing wrong with looking at options when an opportunity presents itself. I think that including all parties is very important. And I think that, you know, hopefully we're all after the same goal here, and is that to make sure that the fire department is in place and functioning and providing the services that the citizens expect for an extended period of time. You know, beyond this council, potentially beyond some of the people that are currently employed there. That being said, you know, the RFA, the options of a public safety director, or the options of what is referred to as a status quo, as hiring a chief to fill that position. I think that, you know, looking at all three options, they're potentially viable. Cost saving could be questioned. I would encourage the council to narrow it down to what they think are viable, long-term options for the fire department. I'd like to thank Chief Vance for stepping in and doing the job. He's doing a heck of a good job. It's not an easy position to be in, and it's about all I've got right now.
Thank you. Mr. Harrington, you had been starting to start up, stand up.
Thank you. My name is Pat Harrington. I live at five twenty-one North Satsum Street. I understand that there's some grumblings, not grumblings, but there's, you know, things being said about the possibility of an RFA. Now, people I've spoken to are not in favor of RFA. Because we, we went down this, I went down this road when I was on the council. And while on paper it looks pretty, pretty good. But, when you get down to the real nuts and bolts of it all, it doesn't serve the community well. And there's a lot of things that, that the people, citizens don't realize are gonna take place if an RFA is in effect. If we go to an RFA. People I know in this town have told me many times, they're perfectly happy with the fire department and the structure that we have at this time. Now, I'm not, I don't know about Chief Vance, his situation with the fire department or the current chief. I, I'm not aware of anything like that. I just know that an RFA is not something that's, I think would be in the best interest of the citizenry. And I would like to hear, I would like to see and read something more or different than what we had when I was on the council. And from what I've heard so far, there have not been any things, any, any differences. It's just the same old, same idea, just a different time. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else want to say anything?
Do I need the mic up or not?
Yes, please.
Scott Booz, I don't live in the city anymore. I live out in my county district. But I am the president of the volunteers. I would just like to say, I think it's, is a good idea to consider every option. Make sure that you're spending citizens' tax dollars wisely. You know, we were given several different scenarios, RFA, the, the safety director, and also the current structure, that, the command structure that's in place. And I would really like to, as far as I can tell, that's the best structure there is, the command structure that is in place with a chief. And I, you know, and I, this may be a low-level side of it, but just from my point of view, I feel like we're just delaying getting the chief in there and getting those positions filled that we need to get filled. And thank you for having us, I appreciate it.
Anyone else like to make a comment?
Hi, Debbie Wilson, from thirteen twelve West Wispere Lane. As you probably most know, that I'm retired from here, I have over thirty-one years. And I work closely with the Amazon Fire Department. So I have a blind amount of knowledge. We did try do the RIA before. It is something that has to go over to people, even if it does happen. But, we have the studies there, and we did. Budgets and things, it's a more expensive route. It does cost more. And the citizens of Montana don't get, as personal service, I guess you'd say, don't have as much say. Just through my experience and knowledge, I feel we need to stick with this current structure and just get our positions filled. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to make a comment? Okay. Anyone else wants to, feel free to just, I guess, raise your hand or stand up and let me know. I think that what Councilman, excuse me, Mr. Watkins has stated makes sense to me as to kind of figuring out what are valid options. And, I mean, I think that, I think I've been pretty clear that the RFA is not a good option from my perspective for a variety of reasons. I've said that as many times as I possibly can. So there's only two options that I would be looking at. As I've told the fire department, we're just not in a place to look at them right now. Mainly because it takes time. Takes time, it takes people at the table, and I, there are some priorities that I need to finish before I can get to that place. So, I'm not sure what the council's pleasure as to how to. Councilman Carroll, did you want to add anything?
I, I guess I'm just disappointed that, that we haven't taken a more proactive position on this. And I, I'm having a really hard time understanding why, why we can't move forward with hiring a fire chief. I understand there's, there's been union negotiations and that kind of thing going on. But I'm, I'm very, very concerned. And would like to say that my position is that we shouldn't immediately pursue that, that fire chief's position. This whole research responsibility for, for researching these different options should fall squarely on the shoulders initially of a fire chief. And, and be that his, his or her responsibility to pursue those options on a, on an as-needed basis. And so I'm, I, the longer we, we protract this hiring process, the further down the road we get of, of my fellow volunteers and, and paid staff of feeling neglected. I know you've said you, you don't intentionally mean to do that, but that is happening. And, and I think that's very disappointing. I would really encourage us to move forward, hire that fire chief, and, and let them do the research and, and present that information to the council.
Well, I guess the only piece of that that you're, you're jumping is, if the fire chief, if that's the council's pleasure, obviously that's what will happen. But I need to hire CFO first, and I, I appreciate that we are two department heads down. And.
Yes, we are.
And so unless one of you is volunteering to take over the admin section of those positions, I am, I'm doing all that I can at this point. That being said, if we hire a fire chief, we're not gonna explore the public safety director position. Because a fire chief will be hired, and we will be done with that conversation. So, so it's kind of an interesting quandary. If, if that is the council's position, I just need to know that. Because the, the hiring of a fire chief means there is no public safety director position. We're not gonna add administration to a situation which would end up costing the city more money. So, it's not, it's, that's not an option. We don't have funds to do that. But, but we could hire a fire chief. I will say, the CFO situation is, as you know, it went out in August, and it's still, we're still having some, there's some concerns. And so, probably we are not going to have a CFO for a few more months. And, and the reason the CFO for me is a priority, just to be clear. I have a chief that can handle the admin as to the fire department. And I don't have anyone that can do the CFO position within the city. The, and so we have ARP money, and we had this conversation, I believe at the last meeting. The, the payment on the fire generator, I'm jury-raving it hopefully, to have it paid on November first. Because if it is paid at the end of October, someone has to write the report for the ARP funding to the federal government. I don't have a CFO to do that, and so I would have to use the other two, which creates a lack of continuity and, and planning on, from a financial perspective. So, I want to be very clear. The number one task for the city right now is hire the CFO. And ideally get the, the positions filled, I believe. Chief, you can correct me if I'm wrong, that we are in the process of testing?
We are.
And.
It's in the paper right now.
And so, and the, and so, and what else are, we have to build, we have to apply for some grants. Because we expect some infrastructure money coming down the pipe. This council needs to pass a budget, which includes ARP money, and make some decisions. So there's a, there's a lot. So, if you believe the fire department cannot function without a fire chief, and that needs to be a higher priority than all the other things in front of the city, then that's a, that's a valid opinion, but it's not mine. then that's a, that's a valid opinion, but it's not mine. Sorry, I don't know what the rest of the council feels.
So I, I just think it's a false choice between CFO and fire chief. I think we could put out the advertisement and have the resumes coming in. And you, you don't have to have those interviews right away. But I think you could have those resumes coming in the pipeline while you are working on the CFO position. And I don't think you need the CFO in order to go advertise for applicants for the fire chief. So I think, you know, having, choosing one over the other, I think, is not a choice that the city needs to make. We have, in our code, a fire chief position. And I've expressed this before. I think having discussions about joining an RFA that doesn't exist and having discussions about long-term joint administration are unnecessary diversions when we discuss...
Okay, I just want to clarify, I haven't had those discussions, but I know you have.
Well, you're the one that put it on the agenda.
I did not put it on the agenda. You asked that I put it on the agenda.
I don't think that is correct. You know, I mean, it said in our package that it was initiated by Mayor Benny Samuel. So I found out it was on the agenda when somebody called me and asked me what was going on. So I don't know where you conclude that I put it on the agenda when it was your agenda item with your name on it. I have advocated for hiring a fire chief.
Okay, so we have two people hiring, wanting to hire a fire chief. Does anybody else want that?
I, first off, with the RFI, RFA, I think everybody realizes that's a non-starter. Even if it was the direction we wanted to go, we don't have the time. We can't, it would have to happen down the road sometime with the fire chief doing the work and being the one promoting it. The concerns that were raised about the personal touch that our fire department gives this community are valid. I wouldn't want to get swallowed up in a larger group and lose what we have. We have a very special fire department. So I think that the public safety director is an interesting idea. I will say that I'm leaning toward a fire chief. And one of the reasons for that is I think that it's important that our fire department's resources are dedicated to the fire department. I think having a dedicated chief that can pitch in with the crews, I think that matters. I don't know who, what a candidate would look like for a public safety director position. But I know that we're not a large municipal government, so we might not be able to attract the type of person that we would need to do that anyway, long-term. Chief Vance is doing a great job. We appreciate that very much. But, you know, one person can only do so much. So I am in favor of moving forward with filling the fire chief position.
I think most people are concerned that it took so long, but I think it's because the labor agreement took so long. I, I'm in favor of sticking with the same structure, you know. But I, I knew that it would probably be after the contract. When we settled the contract, we really knew where we could go. But the idea of a discussion, you know, that's how we learn. And if we would have had a discussion, we would have learned, so.
I don't mean to cut you off, but that's four, unless you want to say something?
No, I don't, because I am kind of in the same position. I do, I, but this was never a, we're going to act on this within a month. This was a, let's bring this up for discussion. How are we moving forward? How are we going to get things back on track? Not all of a sudden, we're going to an RFA, we're going to go contract with District 2. None of those things were ever on the table. So it's almost kind of like we're going down a path that we weren't even going down, to be, to be blunt about it. So I think there's obviously points that I'll make in the regular meeting, but I just don't see, to me, this was a little premature.
It was premature. So here's my dilemma. I disagree with you, Councilman Wood. I appreciate that you think I have the capacity. I certainly don't have the staff to handle one more hiring. So what I am willing to do is to give this to the Public Safety Committee and let them start the process. Because I am not capable right now of doing one more thing. We have two pieces of litigation, and it is, I, I'm losing days of work right now as well as dealing with all other aspects of the city. I do not have the capacity to handle another hiring. So if the Public Safety Committee wants to handle the, all the various aspects of it and start us down the process to get us resumes and, and to contact each person and make sure that they know a timeline, which is not as attainable to me, they're welcome to do so. Go ahead. Yeah, yeah, of course.
So I wish I knew the answer to this question, but what happened to the list that we picked and put up? Is that one expired?
Yeah, yeah. That's over a year ago.
Okay, okay.
So I guess that's where we're at. I mean, I have heard from four council people that you guys want to move with the fire department and move forward with the structure. And I really, if that's the council's choice, then that's the council's pleasure and we can certainly do that and allow the safety committee to start the process.
While I do have an HR background and I work in HR, I don't feel I'm at a capacity to do that. So I would decline as the chairman of the Public Safety Committee.
Okay, then the council will just have to wait for me. Because the problem, I, and I, and I, forgive me for complaining, because that's what I'm doing. Next week, I have an entire day of mediation. This, two weeks ago, I spent an entire day doing discovery. I am, we are beyond 35 hours a week at this point. And I am, you guys are pushing pretty hard on this position. So I'm going to prioritize my time, and I appreciate the fire department, and I apologize to the fire department. But I have a functioning fire department. And that is, when, I guess if the fire department isn't functioning, then that will again make me have to relook at the priorities of where we're at. But right now, I have a full-time staff that's doing well. The hiring is going along. Contract negotiations hopefully will be considered done. The chief is communicating. I don't necessarily think there's anything wrong with the fire department and what they're providing to the community. And because I don't think they're doing anything wrong, they are not in my universe of which has the highest priority that needs to be dealt with. No, that's, I mean, that's what the bottom line is. So...
So I, I heard what you said. And I just want to clarify, your statement in no way is delaying the hiring of the vacant firefighter positions, right? That's moving forward, that process has begun. You're talking about doing a chief search.
Right.
Okay.
And the reason that the other positions are moving forward is because the chief is taking care of it. And I don't have anything to do with it.
Is there an executive search service through Association of Washington Cities?
You're welcome to look and find out.
Okay, I'll ask.
Let me know.
Okay.
So, and I will say, Council, I have been, you guys have been great. I have obviously shared responsibility more over the last three, four months than I have normally shared. And I thank Councilman Trimble, Councilman, and even with some other projects we have. I know that Councilman Coke, Trimble, Wood, and Bryson have been picking up different admin pieces of it. And I am very appreciative because they would not get them unless somebody else was picking it up. Anything, anybody else wants to say or wants to have considered? Go ahead.
I just don't think that the fire is successful. You have to surround yourself with clerks. I just know the Washington Municipal Clerks Association wants to have a pool of retired clerks and financial people that will step in temporarily to help them with the management. So that does make it something that you have to give yourself a hand.
I appreciate that. We have people in place right now to handle the day-to-day. The problem is that it's, it's only for a shorter period of time. I think we're good through the end of the year. But we need somebody, my goal was to have somebody hired this month in order to have them be part of the budgetary process. That didn't, it's not going to pan out. Which means that the, our, our, my, my, the length of our support was through the end of this year. And so now that might have to shift and change, and that is the problem. But right now, we're fine. I mean, they're...
They can get down for sometimes six months or nine months.
Yeah, I really, I would really rather have...
You could use more.
Yeah, I, I really would like to hire our own. Mr. Streeter is handling the day-to-day. And Mr. Blancus is handling the lawsuits that are pending, the ARP. And I think those are the two major pieces that he's handling.
Berks.
And what? He's not, he's not dealing with public records. So...
Not related to the lawsuits?
Oh, yes, as to the lawsuits, of course. And so, so we, we are managing. But having somebody able to take that position and go from there permanently is obviously the better course.
When does the application period close for CFO?
Well, the application had, the application was running. And, and I thought we were pretty close to resolving the issue. And some, certain things happened and so, or hiring, I should say. I thought we were getting closer to hiring and certain things happened. So now I think I'm going to have to reopen the application process. So that's why this is kind of where we're at. Any other questions about this? Okay, so I guess what we take from this is that, I appreciate all of your comments. That was pretty interesting. And, but the council seems to be very clear that they want a fire chief. So I guess that's where we'll go when time allows. And hopefully you'll be able to find an executive person, whatever, and send it to me. You're welcome to start the process. The fire chief job description is pretty straight up. It doesn't, it's the same one that we used a year ago, which I think was vetted both by, by Chief Roxx. And I'm trying to think of who else it was, but two people, and two chiefs. And so I think that we can probably use the same form. The, but the process has to be, has to be done. And it has to be a wide enough search.
It's probably a fee-for-service thing too.
I'm sure it is. We had not done that last time. Last time we used two services, I think, that were relatively free. And, I mean, for advertising, and then we advertised in all the, I don't want to say, trade, trade-type publications, whether it's online or whatever. We did not use an entity to do that. It is costly to do that, which is why I hadn't, I did not use that option previously. Anything else? Okay, so it is now 6:30. I appreciate, does anybody else want to make a comment before I close this town hall, I guess, or workshop?
We just appreciate the opportunity to share information.
Thank you. If there's anything else, I'm going to go ahead and close this up. Councilwoman, first of all, I know you've been standing there. Did you want to say anything?
Uh, no.
Okay. Councilman Coke, did you want to say anything?
I'll reserve my comments for public comment or for the council committees.
Okay. So with that, I'm just going to close this meeting down. And we will have our regular meeting at 7 o'clock. Councilman Coke, I'm going to hang up on you.
Will you please call me when you're ready to go?
Yes.
Thank you.
...
Turn the movie down back.
Who would want to do that? Did you have enough battery to?
For Ian?
Yeah. I'm still not used to using green batteries. So I put them on and I stand up and start walking. And I just got my contacts correct.
Hey guys, we have one minute. Hey, I have you on speaker Ian.
Turn the movie down.
It's hard to hear.
I don't know what we can do about it, but in part of our experience, this is very difficult to hear those speaking during public comment.
I think he said it's difficult though to know who was speaking, so maybe identify themselves better.
Was it Ian, was it hard to hear what they were saying or was it hard to hear who was speaking?
Uh, it was completely inaudible. The speakers that were at the dais or at the podium could hear the council speaking at this time.
Okay. Oh, he turned it up, he said, so hopefully it will work better. If it doesn't, please let me know. Okay, I am calling the Montesano City Council meeting for October 12th to order. You all stand with me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, whose republic, which stands in the nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, would the clerk please call, roll call?
Councilman Scaramucca?
Here.
Councilman Bryson?
Here.
Councilman Coe?
Here.
Councilwoman Cristobal?
Here.
Councilman Carl?
Here.
Councilman Wood?
Here.
Councilman Trivel?
Here.
With, uh, is there a motion to approve the bills?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion by Councilman Trivel and a second by Councilman Bryson to approve the bills as audited. Would the finance committee like to make a report?
Three hundred and twenty-seven thousand fifty-four dollars and twenty-four cents, the largest bill going to Roglands Incorporated for the Sylvia Creek project at two hundred and twenty-three thousand two hundred and forty-five dollars.
Is there any discussion or any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motions carries, the bills are approved as audited. Before we move further in the agenda, I just want to clarify, I, it is in your packet, which is the Greater Lakes Harbor contract, but it's not on the agenda. I'm going to put that at the end of new business. However, it is only for introduction purposes. So we are now at approval of minutes. There are two sets of minutes, I'd like to take them independently as they have an attachment as to one. Is there a motion as to the September fourteenth with proposed attachment by Councilman Wood?
Move for approval of the minutes for September fourteenth, including the attachment proposed by Councilman Wood.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Is there discussion? I would just ask that anything attributed to me be stricken on that attachment because I did not have the opportunity to review the tape. So those things, so the different, we normally don't do this because obviously there's very specific attribution. And so since I didn't review it, I would just ask anything that I had said not be there. Be, so it would start at the mayor said, it would be lines two, three, I mean, the very beginning, and then the last part. This would go in between, so there is a section that said discussion ensued, so it would just be in addition to that. I'm assuming all of you also listened to the tape and can confirm that for yourself.
I can tell you that I did not and I was not here, so my opinions on what actually happened would be negligent on my part. So I just don't see us doing this all the time on every meeting, so it's just my opinion.
So Vinny, you would strike where says the mayor noted and then down to the bottom, mayor said.
I think it says the mayor said she wanted to and then down below she said, well, yeah, said. Oh yeah, yeah, you're right, the mayor noted. Thank you for that.
Oh, I see, up there.
Councilman Wood, is that, your intent is fine with that?
Yeah.
So has the motion or I'll accept that amendment?
Is anybody else having changes or any corrections to this? Okay, with that, with that specific corrections as to my comments, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now we are at September twenty-eighth. Is there a motion?
I move.
Is there a second?
A second.
A motion was made by Councilman Scaramucca and seconded by Councilwoman Cristobal. Is there, for the minutes as to September twenty-eighth, is there anyone that has any corrections or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any objections? The September twenty-eighth minutes are approved as written. We are at public comment. Is there anyone that would like to make public comment at this time? Go ahead. Please come to the podium and use the mic. Uh, I'm just going to interrupt you for one second. Councilman Coe, please let me know as soon as you can if you cannot hear.
Helen Hepp, four one nine North Calder Street, Montesano. To update you with what's going on with Friends of the Library, I have a letter that was sent out to the Friends. For your information, we have been storing our book sale books in the basement of the library forever. We have, this is for the book sale and we have had a very successful book sale continually. We just received word, rather preemptory, in August or September, that we were to have most of our books, well, majority of them, cleared out by January first. This came not from the board, but from somebody who thinks she's, some person who is in charge, behave myself. We are just a little bit concerned about this. Anyway, we are going to be having a big blowout book sale the month of November. It will be in the basement of the library. Fridays and Saturdays, there will be somebody down there from ten to two to allow you to go in and to the back room and shop there. This is not going to be your usual book sale. If you want to go down during the week, you will be able to and it'll be on the honor system and frankly, if you walked off with some books, I think nobody would care. But anyway, so that's what's happening. If you're looking for a new place to volunteer or you have somebody else who you know who is looking for a place to volunteer, boy, have I got you covered right here. Thank you.
What?
Yes.
Regarding the volunteers?
Yes.
Would you be open to having people continue service that may have been subject to your course?
Probably.
Depending on, obviously subject to your approval. Yeah, as long as they don't accidentally alter my agenda. You don't have to, it's just a question of them doing something, working on profits, and then you sign off on how that is. Yeah, we can, we can use the help and we've got, we've found some wonderful new, recently retired folks who are quite thrilled to be part of the action and will work and we use that. I'll leave some of these downstairs. Thank you very much.
Helen, is this on the Facebook page for Friends of the Library?
I don't know. And if it is, if you could put it on, I'd love it.
Okay, well, that, is there anyone else that has any other public comment? Thank you, Helen. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and move on. The next item is committee reports. Does Public Works want to make a report?
Yeah, I can go first. Okay, Public Works Committee met on Wednesday, October sixth. The whole meeting was budget, 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 budget. I'll start with the two main budget topics which affect general fund. The first is street maintenance. We're asking for two and a half percent increase and that gets us up to about one hundred eighty-four thousand. And that's basically personnel. It supports one full-time employee and we're obligated to give them a pay raise, so. The second is parks. Parks is going to go up about four percent to about one hundred fifty thousand. Same thing, it supports one full-time employee. And we also have scheduled is for Crate Field, we want to do an upgrade on the restrooms at Crate Field. So that's a four percent increase. Next, we'll go into enterprise funds, hotel motel. For next year, November of two thousand twenty-two, we'd like to spend, or somebody wants to spend two thousand dollars on Christmas lights, I believe it's Mike. These are the lights that will go on the decorative poles downtown. It's time to upgrade. And there's also, I believe it's the mayor is asking for a ten thousand dollars for some type of decorative fence to the entrance of Mon, City of Montesano. I'm sure that'll be a spirited conversation as we get farther along with that. Okay, real estate excise tax.
Couldn't we just put the old lights there instead?
We could, yeah. Real estate excise tax, we're asking for fifty thousand dollars to go to the street fund again to help, help fund all our projects that we have coming up this year. Street projects for next year. We have five applications of TIB. We're going to need funding, ten percent funding. The first project is West Pioneer. It's in the designs phases next year again. We'll get to the right-of-way acquisition part of that. The next project is East Weinucci. We have a water main replacement project and we'll probably end up doing some street work. East Pioneer, there's a section from Academy to Glen. We put new sidewalks on the north side last year and we want to do a water main project there and maybe Storm if there's Storm and of course, resurface it. Then we've got fifty thousand dollars that we're asking for just various pre-leveling in the city. And that's where we go in and we have, we do just asphalt repairs and then prepare them for chip seal. It's a, it's a project. Oh, from the four oh one, water and sewer. We project the revenue to be up two and a half percent, but we also project materials to go up two and a half percent. That's, you know, everything from, everything we purchase, from energy to everything, fuel. Storm. We're asking for one hundred fifty thousand from Storm next year just to, just to help out with those various street projects. And wastewater capital reserve, we'd like to spend thirty thousand just in upgrades at wastewater treatment plant and that's mostly, mostly electrical upgrades. And that's it.
Okay, well, that's a lot of money. And so we will talk about it for a little bit later. Thank you. Does anyone, I'm going to reserve any kind of discussion for when we get to the budget, if that's okay with you. Now on to forestry.
Thank you. So the forestry committee did meet tonight. Forester Lauren Heiner reported that some slash piles were burned today. He also reported that previously approved pre-commercial thinning contracts will likely begin next month. And then the bulk of the discussion centered around some needs for road repair. We have, and it's in the packet tonight, we have a need for eighty-five thousand dollars in rock and repair work up in the city forest roads. Typically, he budgets twenty thousand a year, which many of you would know this, not often used. He's done a real good job of protecting our roads the best he can. So between last year and this year, we have thirty dollars, thirty thousand still available for that, for that work. He's also identified an additional thirty thousand within his existing budget that he can use for these purposes, which leaves a shortfall of twenty-five thousand. So the forestry committee is going to recommend a motion to approve expenditure of an additional twenty-five thousand, which will be adjusted via supplemental budget. I'm going to hold off on making that motion until we get to new business, but I wanted to make you aware. Any questions for the forestry committee?
Do we, do we have an ending fund balance after this or do we, do you know? Forests?
I'm going to, I'm going to hold that conversation because it is on the agenda for later. When we deal with the specific items and Forester Heiner can also discuss that. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so there is no old business, there is under new business. We have, I'm going to start with a controlled training burn if you would like to, chief, if you would like to report on that.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, I just want to, this is informational. The fire department's going to do a controlled training burn. The address, I'm going to say six one two East Pioneer, which is the old Lions building. And they're going to do it on October twenty-third. The roadway will be locked off for a portion of the day. We'll have barricades and whatnot locked off. And so I just wanted the council to have information on it. If anybody has any questions, questions, questions?
Will there be fireworks at the end of the burn?
No, there, you know, hopefully, hopefully they'll get some, you know, the building, we looked at it, there's a couple training opportunities inside the building. We've got a lot of young staff and so that's really the reason they're going to do it and it'll be down by the end of the day. And so I think Captain Smith said it basically that the timeframe will be like an eight to eight, by eight o'clock. By, he's hoping by five o'clock, the roadway will be By, he's hoping by 5 o'clock, the roadway will be opened back up, but we'll probably close the roadway somewhere around 9 or 10, do the burn, so, anyway. That's what we have. October 23rd is the planned date. Now, if anything changes, I'll definitely let you know, but that's the planned date for it, and that's, I believe that's Saturday. The only thing going on that day would be Saturday morning market, but we're at the opposite of town, so I don't think it's gonna affect anything, but.
Does anybody have any questions for the chief?
Has this building been cleared out on the inside, or is it still?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's pretty much a shell. I mean, it's got some, you know, it's still got sheet rock and things like that, but it has the opportunity for them to be able to do some ventilation-type stuff, and so on and so forth, so. And it's, you know, everything around it's been already cleared for the most part, the other fire that was there that burned the other building down, so it is, it's kinda down in that hole, so it is a pretty good opportunity. Yep. Anyway, thank you, Councilor Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna recap town hall. If you guys have anything after I recap, feel free to add to it. We had four members of the public speak. Rick Walkinson had said that, that we should, that he understood looking at all three options, but urged the council to narrow it down to those things that are viable. Pat Harrington said he was not in favor of the RFA, that it did not serve the community well, and that it was the same idea that he had considered when he was on the council, but in kind of different clothing, I suppose, is what he was trying to say, and he did not believe that was in the interest of the citizenry. Scott Fuzen just said, consider every option, and understands that the need to spend money wisely, but he thought that the best was in the command structure within the fire chief. Debbie Wisdom, I didn't hear a lot of what she said, it was muffled, but she said it was the more, that the, I think it was RFA was the most expressed group. I was a little confused. And she also put in some commentary as to the clerk position, having the city go towards the municipal clerks for the CFO as a sub. The council, Council Carroll, Councilman Carroll indicated that he wanted the fire chief position filled, and then he felt that it was neglected. Councilman Wood urged that the fire chief position be fulfilled. Councilman Scaramuka and Councilman Bryson also said that they leaned towards the fire chief being filled. Councilman Trimble indicated that he felt the situation was a little premature. I indicated that I did not have more or less the bandwidth to handle that at this point, because the priorities that I had to deal with, which included the CFO, the two pieces of litigation that are pending between the city, the project at the front of the building, let me see, the front of town, and the grants that needed to be dealt with, and the budget and the ARP funds had my attention, and those for me were higher of priority because they were immediate, versus the fire chief was not immediate, as long as we had Chief Vance at the helm and working. And so, Councilman Wood volunteered. I suggested that the public safety committee handle the hiring, or at least the processing of the hire. Public Safety Committee declined. Councilman Wood offered to look and find us an entity to hire to go through some sort of search, and that's where we have it. Happy that Councilman Wood has volunteered to do that. I did wanna correct, and I was wrong, so I just wanna correct for the record, that I, I did put it on the agenda, the item on the search, not the search, the, to start discussion at, with the, the item I put on the agenda on the, I believe, the first or second meeting of September, was to start the discussion with the union and the volunteers, not with the council, but that's what we started. I mean, and, and I just wanna be very clear, the reason I put that on the agenda was because there had been many commentary, many comments about a lack of communication, and so, so that's why I had put it on the agenda, and I wanted to correct that, because I had said that it was Councilman Wood, it was not. And I just, I did not realize which meeting we were talking about, and which agenda item, but I remembered, and I apologize for that.
Thank you.
Is there anything I forgot on the recap? Okay, moving on. Budget 2020, presentation of full budget. You have my budget. There is not a significant change from the num, not the numbers, from the structure of the budget chair, of the budget from last year to this year, except, of course, all the increases as to raises, and the projects identified as by each of the committees, including obviously, the most significant being Public Works. That being said, the, what are the other parts of the budget that I think is important? I think that the process that we should be looking at is that, since we don't have a handy-dandy CFO that handles this for us, that each of the committees should be expecting to present some information asked to the budget, and, and have any kind of opinion, I guess, and that we can go through it and talk about it. The budget needs to be passed by December 14th. We will need to also, I just realized, pass the 1% increase and a supplemental budget at around the same time. It might be before December 1st, if I remember correctly. Yeah, so, I'll add that to my list, and I'm not exactly sure how to do that, so I will call Mr. Blankus and Mr. Streeter and hope that they can explain to me how. So what I, what I, what I, one of the things that is not included in here that is critical that needs to be included is the ARP money. I've sent to Finance Committee my list of items as to allocation of monies. I would suggest that every committee or council member send the, to Finance Committee that information, so that we can kind of assess where we are, and let Finance Committee take a look at it, bring it back to the council in its entirety, in some kind of formatted, I mean, I'd like them to be the clearinghouse, I suppose, and then bring it back to the council, just have a full discussion on it. I think that is easier than it all coming to me. In fact, I would prefer it not all coming to me, and so.
Do we need to do it on this budget, same cycle as with this budget, or could it be staggered a little bit, so that there's a little less volume of decision-making to punch out in a different rate?
Well, I think.
I'm just thinking the Finance Committee might have more capacity if they waited on making ARP recommendations, since we've got a supplemental budget and a new budget.
Well, my, my piece of it, okay, so I'm trying to remember the items I suggested. The generator is obviously in front, and, but I would like to move on some of these things, such as the technology stuff, and I would like to move on the roof piece of it, because they're super expensive, and the delay of it are not, is not gonna diminish the cost. So there are, I'm gonna try to get the list that I have. I would like us to talk about it. If you guys don't wanna spend the money, then, then we're not gonna allocate the money. But I do think we should talk about it, instead of delaying, again, the conversation.
I'm just, I'm just thinking of capacity for what's running, running through the committee.
Well.
I think that Finance also needs to have a sit-down now that we have this, and so that'll allow us a little bit of opportunity to look through it, and, and get to a point where we can sit down. Obviously, we didn't have that time tonight, but we'll, we'll get there, by the next meeting, I would imagine. Plus, there's a couple other committees that still need to meet.
Well, and we were talking about that in Public Works, that we're gonna, you know, I mean, with our normal meeting schedule, we're gonna have to schedule, schedule a special meeting in order to do the budget, because I'm assuming we want the subject matter committees, like Public Works, to now respond to this.
Completely.
Send it to Finance Committee, so Finance Committee can just bring it all together and bring it back to council.
Completely.
And we've got two months to do that, so.
Yep.
So, let's.
And you need time to get from the various subject committees.
So, so looking at timing, what I would like to do is have every committee please have to finance, we only have four meetings, unless you guys wanna meet on December 28th. And I will not be here on December 28th, so I'm hoping we have four meetings. So, let's plan on having everything to finance, you guys need to meet before the 25th of this month, so that they can at least have a, kind of a pre-visit on the, the 26th, and then if you guys are ready to give any kind of reports, that's great. If you're not, then we will do the report on the following council meeting, that gives us three meetings to talk about it.
Yeah, and at some point, we might have to have a, just a workshop to kind of budget overview, rather than trying to stuff it all into a.
That's actually a really great idea. Do you guys wanna plan on that right now, on like, November 16th? And so we can, we can have that date already, kind of.
Is that our regular meeting?
No, do you wanna do it on our regular meeting?
I, I, I've got a real commitment on the 16th, so I could probably zoom in if we had a special meeting.
What would you guys, I, I sit there thinking to myself, a part of me, we have other business all the time, and especially right now, we all have some presentations that'll be coming down the pipe, and so my preference is that we have a dedicated time to talk about the budget, instead of this little piecemeal, or having an hour or half an hour before the meeting.
I just, I just try to do my best to schedule things around the second and fourth Tuesday, and so I've scheduled something to be done during that week, so.
Totally fair.
But if that's, if the majority wants to do that, I'll figure it out, you know.
Well, we could do, we could start really early on the 9th, which is another version of fab scheduling, too. So I don't, I mean, I, this is up to you all. I am, I am free on the 9th and the 23rd, and my schedule becomes free at 5:00. And so, what would you, what's the council's preference? Would you guys like to have it on the 16th, and have a dedicated time? Would you like to start like, at 5:00 on the 9th? You, what would you guys like to do?
I think earlier in the month is better, because we may need more time. So I hate to put it off too long and then find out we wish we had another opportunity, so.
You guys.
I, I would prefer the 9th.
Okay.
If that works for the rest of the council.
If we said 5:00, is that viable for all of you?
The 9th.
That means at 5:00 on the 9th of November?
Yes.
Disappointing, I have to be though.
Councilman Scaramuka?
I'll make it work, yes.
I'm looking at both sides of the room, and I'm just asking.
Absolutely fine.
All right, so from 5:00 to 7:00, what we'll have is a workshop, we'll just go through the entire budget, and, and each committee needs, actually Finance, that gives Finance between the 25th and the 9th to meet, prep, do whatever is necessary to, I guess, lead the discussion. So, the request for the other members are, is, number one, your committees present whatever information needs to be presented beyond what is in front of the, beyond what's beyond the budget. And the second is that if you have any kind of specific desires for ARP money pieces, that you provide that to council, I mean, excuse me, to Finance, that would be Councilman Trimble as chair by the 25th. Councilman Wood, if you will resend, I know that we can find it, but if you will resend your materials, you were the only other one that had any specific idea, but if anybody has it, please send it. So, I don't know whether or not.
Who do you want me to send it to? Tyler?
Yeah. Okay, so, does anyone have any specific questions about the budget?
So, do we, I'm looking on page 18, and also on 6, so in the ambulance fund.
Uh huh.
We don't have all, all six of the positions budgeted for in this.
It should be.
So I'm looking at line 522, 261800.
So let me, let me find out, but all six positions should be budgeted in.
Okay, well, it shows as a proposed for zero.
That's interim fire chief?
Says captain wages.
Which, which page are you on?
I'm on page 18.
Give me one second.
Under fire control, budget 522, 12, well, second line down, 522261800, captain wages, the 67.5%, it says vacant, and the original was almost 54,000, proposed as zero.
I'm not sure, Rox Johnson, vacant, because it's a lieutenant, is that why? I think it might be because that position is lieutenant.
I don't, I don't have it for me, so I, I don't.
So let me, let me explain to you guys what did, so it's on page 18, and I, I think I can answer that question, actually, without other people, which is lovely. If you take a look down below, it, it should have also been removed. It's, that, so right now, what we have is three captains and a lieutenant, and not a, we don't have four captains. A lieutenant is working out of class to some degree to do the 24-hour shift. The, those are our four full-time. So the, if you look down below a little bit, to the next section of captain benefits, you'll see that it says a Walkinson.
Mm-hmm.
And so that's the fourth captain that was removed, because there is no fourth captain. Does that make sense?
Aren't we going to have a fourth?
We may not have a fourth captain, because the position is being currently filled with a lieutenant. So, so the 24-hour shift is a, is now currently out of class lieutenant.
Okay, I guess the bottom line is well, will, are all six positions budgeted for work or salary and benefits in here?
They should be, I will double check, but they should be.
All right, thank you.
Just write that down, make sure. Anybody else have any questions?
Can we go back to page 2? Goes back to income, revenue?
Yes. We go.
336064200, says marijuana excise tax distribution, I just, is there an explanation? I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't exactly know why the state pays us that. I believe it's because it, it, you'll notice it's actually a fairly minimal amount, and I think it's because we get a percentage of it no matter what.
Okay.
But it's not because of tax per se that we collect, because in the city limits.
I think that's correct. And I think also because, if I recall correctly, it's been a long time, because we have not banned the, the sale of it here.
Correct.
Then we are eligible for that tiny.
Right.
Hostile revenue sharing.
Right.
I think if we banned it, then we wouldn't get that, but it's not.
So the city doesn't have, currently, an area that allows for it based on exemptions or exclusions, but we have not formally banned it. Anybody else have any specific questions about the budget? It's okay if you have questions later, obviously, but if there's anybody that's reviewed it that has any issues or thoughts about it at this point, I'm happy to try to answer, or at least follow up.
I have two revenue questions here.
Sure.
On page 1, on, under 310 taxes, first line, general property taxes, 31110000. So that's projecting a $10,000 increase, and it just says 1% increase. Have we allotted for new construction, or just a 1%?
Yes.
Are we, aren't we allowed to go up 1% plus new construction?
No, I thought that we can only go up 1% from the.
Assess amount, you can read four, I think, but it's a 1% gap.
No matter what.
Okay. Can we, can we verify that sometime?
Well, yeah, I mean, I.
Because I always thought it was 1% plus new construction.
I feel like we have had this conversation multiple times.
Probably annually.
Annually.
Yeah.
And it says a lot that none of us remember this conversation.
Yeah.
And in fact, didn't we have the person from next door? And in fact, didn't we have the person from next door come in and do a presentation?
We get the number from the county.
Right.
And so we just base it off whatever they give us, a 1% of that. I don't know if that includes the new construction, but it's a number we get from the auditor.
Assessor.
Assessor, yeah.
Okay. I mean, you know, the new construction might add a little bit more.
You are welcome to call the assessor.
I will, I will add that to my list when I talk to AWC.
Okay, that's perfect.
All right.
And please feel free to report back.
I will. The second is retail sales and use tax, $140,000 projected increase.
So.
What's that based on?
So we have, it's based on collected revenue, projected sales tax revenue over the past nine months, or eight months when we were collecting. And I think finance reported on it a couple times. We were watching, I think Mr. Blankis and I had long conversations about this, because my worry was, so let me just give you guys some background. We lost roughly around 20-plus percent of box store sales tax. However, we recouped 40% of destination tax, which was for the first time available in 2020 and 2021. And so we saw a pretty large jump in, because of destination tax. However, the, the interesting, and this is where Mr. Blankis and I had conversations, is if people aren't staying home anymore, and they're back doing things, whether we should expect that figure because they're not getting things mailed to their home because they're at their computer at home, taking shopping therapy or whatever, or being able to work in their garden, or whatever is available. So I think this was a, a, I don't know what the sales tax is as, the sales tax collection is as of today, or these don't have a handy-dandy person providing it to me, but I will say that I have every expectation that it has been consistent. So $640,000 next year is, is viable.
Viable?
Mm-hmm. We should be at $700,000 this year. And so I felt a little uncomfortable. I thought that was a little bit on the high side, but I tend to be more conservative on the collection. But I think, I mean, if we get half of the destination tax, this is, this should work.
And because the, the destination tax is pretty new, we don't have a history to know what would likely be focused.
Right. That's the problem.
So we're sort of rolling the dice.
When, when did this tax start? This online sales you're talking about?
2020. So what happened was prior to 2020, it saved, it saved all cities in 2020. But prior to 2020, when something, you order something from Amazon, the local city never got anything from it.
Right.
And so, I should say, I don't actually know where the tax was collected, but what the new, new rule is that if it's delivered in the city, that city gets a percentage of the sales tax. And I'll, I'll say, it is 40% of our collection right now. It is massive. And, and without it, 2020, we would have seen probably $100,000 to $125,000 loss in our projected sales tax. So the, it's pretty significant.
But do you know what percent we're collecting of the sales tax, or?
Yeah, it's like 40, oh, what?
What's our tax rate? Sales tax rate for the city?
It's eight point, but we, we're collecting all that? Or you say?
Yeah, no, no, we don't collect the full 8%.
We collect.
We collect a portion of. Yeah, I don't even know what.
Are we at 1%? I mean, I think most of it is the state.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then.
When you, when you purchase, it'll, there's a drop-down, and it'll, it'll say zip code and in-city limits a lot of times now.
Oh, no, you're asking, I think, a different question. So when, when something gets purchased, a variety of people, it's sort of like the property tax, a variety of people take a, a percentage of that tax. And so the sales tax, there's a bunch of people hands in the till, and we get a piece of it.
It's, it's the case of Wayfair that came out, and so what happens is if, if somebody ships something from Washington to California, for example, they would have to calculate the tax at the state, county, city level, and then it gets dispersed. So they do quarterly reports to California, for example, if they're based in Washington, saying it was 2.4%.
Okay.
One site says our local taxes. I don't know if it's accurate.
And it changes quarterly. I think those things get updated depending, but it's, again, it's just a check.
It's less than 3%, I know that.
Excuse me?
It was less than 3%. I know that.
So that's where it comes from. I don't think it is optimistic. I think it is right down the middle of the road. I would be perfectly happy to chop $30,000, $40,000 off of that and be severely conservative. But I do think we'll collect at least $640,000, so I'm, I'm comfortable. Any other thoughts or questions about this? Okay, well, if you do have any, please hold them and let me know.
State auditor cost, are we in a big audit review year? Is that why that?
Just normal audit.
What?
Just a normal audit.
Looks like.
Yeah, that's the one we're currently on, yeah.
It's going from $2,500 to $20,000? Is that?
Yeah, because we didn't have one last year.
Oh.
So this next year we'll have.
Normal meaning we're coming.
Correct.
Got it.
And I would say, one of the things, we're right on the cusp. This will probably be our last every-other-year audit.
And then we go like every third?
Every year. We won't be every third. It should be.
Every other year, unless we get a finding and then go over.
No. We are currently at every-other-year.
Correct.
We hit a certain amount of money, I think, and then we go every year. And we were just at that, we're not like significantly, but we're just at that line. And so the auditor has been generous with us to say, oh, you're just like, just kind of at the needle. And so depending on what income is in a year, that, at the next audit, they'll make a determination if where that needle is, where it's at. And so that will then be an additional $20,000 a year.
Oh, damn.
Yeah. Costs go up. Anything else? Okay, so I don't know, I, I think unless Mr. Heiner wants to make a report on his budget, we will wait. It's up to you.
We'll wait.
Okay. All right, we'll just wait on all reports of the budget. Lovely to hear. So let's go to propose ARP funding for a citywide tech. I do want, and as I said, I would really like us to move forward with this mainly because the costs are not diminishing. And as you guys all have heard, construction costs continue to go up, and tech costs and parts and things, it just takes a lot of time for us to institute a lot of the things that are being. So when I, if you guys are looking at that list with me, we talked about this a little bit, I think, in June of last, this year, and as to figuring out which option you all wanted as to where our meetings are going to be. We are getting, starting to get a significant amount of press for use of this room as the holidays approach, and decisions need to be made as to whether or not we go forward with this room or downstairs. And regardless, you guys have also made it very clear you want to do broadcasting of the city council meetings. The infrastructure we have right now was kind of a fail, I mean, it was just kind of stopgap measure when we started broadcasting. But if this is a long-term commitment of the council, we need to work on our sound systems, the cameras, and things of that nature. What our, I, what Sean has done on this is explain the various different costs as well, I would really like to go back to the council chamber. That would be my preference. Most of this is cabling and, and other things that need to be done to make sure that we are connected well between when we're speaking and what is being shown to the public on, on the broadcast. And some of these costs have, you guys have already authorized, the website and closed captioning, well, the website portion of it has been already in the, in the supplemental budget. The, well, I think it was, I can't remember which one you used, but the reoccurring cost per year on card is significantly higher than what we budgeted, because we didn't realize when this was originally created that we would have to do minimums for each meeting. But that is already in the budget. It's under your council budget. It's allocated for $16,000 for part, as well as to have the technology, technology backup to make sure it's happening and that we're following it. So this was on, I think, for the last meeting for introduction, and it is to you, I guess, for some kind of motion. The other piece I was going to say is we, the, we tried to do a full review of the city as to every possible issue that we have technology-wise. And there was one piece, I thought that it was included, it was about all the keys, the key.
Key scan. The, the magnetic door lock system.
If you wanted to explain it, that will, you'll hear a different voice.
Well, just for the council's information, the system that we have that opens the two main doors, the city hall, the key cards, and the front and back door to the police department, that's a system that was purchased over 20 years ago. We have piecemealed that system together through the years, I, different upgrades, whatever it might be. And so there is a, it's currently failing as we speak, and Sean has, is Sean here? Yeah, you, you were able to do a go-around at this point?
Yes, in case of emergency.
In case of emergency. And so, so one piece of the ARP money with the, that would be the, or the technology part of this, would be an upgrade to the software and the main. Control head?
Control box.
Okay, control box. And so that was $6,500, I believe is that's the number. The other option that I threw, I told the mayor, and I, and I tried to think of it, I tried talking to Sean, that's with the four key system. Is there any reason for us to have an eight-key system? It would be adding four more keypad. And I just don't know, I mean, I think it's 85 or 87? 88, okay. So that was just a question to the council. It's there. It's another $2,500, but I wanted to throw it out there, and just in case it's, you know, if we're going to do the upgrade, then we could do an upgrade with eight, we just have to figure out what doors do you want keypad in. Would that be council chambers? Would it be city hall doors, or the interior city hall doors, whatever it might be? I don't know if that's necessary. We have city hall locked down with the four, the four doors we have right now, and, yeah. Anyway, that's what, that's what it is. A control box and new software would be the upgrade for the key, key scan system.
So if you guys look on page two, I just want to walk through it individually to.
Okay, no problem.
So you have council chamber downstairs, option one and two. The only difference is the, the various cameras and all the other kind of video pieces that need to be added if broadcasting is the choice. The website and closed captioning, I already explained, the closed captioning is now being part of our regular budget. It is not part of this. It is significantly higher. But the website is also, has been approved by you, so this section of it has been taken care of. The next page is as to the various, I think Councilman Trimble said this back in February or March. Our city has, we've never, like most, like most budgets, these were not necessarily failing, they were just bad. And so we haven't spent the money on this, because we have needed the money to go to operations. And so the ARP money allows us to do kind of significant capital purchases that we haven't, and we likely will not allocate for, because, you know, when they break, we fix it. And, and for example, the server and the various computers and everything else, all of that, we've got, I don't even know how old my computer is. I, I can tell, the best example that I would say is after I deal with meetings and everything else on Wednesdays, I tend to go to my office to answer email, because it drives me crazy to answer email from the city computer, because it's old and it is clunky. It's old and clunky and not so usable. And so one block home for there, I have a brand-new system that is super easy and I'm comfortable with. And so a lot of the, the fire hall has a computer that is.
We have two. As a matter of fact, I, I laugh, because I had talked to Sean, the computer that's in the chief's office right now, every morning when I go in, I actually have to unplug it, plug it back in to reboot the, reboot it. And it works. You know what? I'm getting by. I've done it for four months. And, and once I do that, I can, I can function. And, but I just thought, you know what? If it's me or whoever else comes into this position, in all reality, they should have a computer, they can come in, move a mouse, it comes up, and it works.
Yeah.
So that, and, and another computer for the staff to be able to get out of the main, I don't know what you want to call it, the hangout area, so they can actually type reports in some piece. So, so anyway, yeah, just a couple, I think we're getting up to, I think we're getting by, and we're doing, I mean, just like we do in life, right? We get by, but when we have a little bit, we can actually get up to standard and get something that's, that's functional. So anyway.
I don't think any of these costs or these requests are asking for anything beyond what most of us who are using computers at this time would consider relatively normal. There are certainly not any, at least from what Sean has told me, these are pretty basic things. Public Works, we, we're, we're trying to encourage them to do all reports upon the, when the event occurs. And so if there is a road, if there is a breakage or anything else, they can do it right then and there, and they're going to come back to the Public Works, the Public Works Hall or Department and filling out paperwork, because the, and people tend to put that off, they tend to get it piled, and so we don't have a consistent history. We don't have a consistent pattern of keeping up on things. And so that's what the tablets are for. The police department, again, the same computer issues, the domain, the server, and the key scan stuff. I think that, and the, and the camera expansion at three locations, those are the, the three that are identified there. As you know, we've talked about expanding the camera, the police asked, the police camera coverage at significant public locations. Does anybody have any questions about any of these things?
It seems to me that the remodel of the old council chambers with the, the raised floor extension is going to cut down on the space for public participation, and the price tag seems very high on some of these options. So, I mean, if we've got a need for a computer that works better for the mayor's office and for the fire department, I think that we ought to be getting computers for those. But I think a lot of the things on here seem to me like they're going well beyond what's necessary and prudent, and, you know, I mean, there, there are certainly some nifty options here that would be, have some. some ooh and ah value, I just don't think we ought to be spending as much money on.
So I want to talk about the council chambers because there's been some, I guess, rumor or statements that it's unnecessary. It is not necessary if you don't want to broadcast. I I want to be very clear about that. I don't think we need, we have to do that. The council has been exceptionally clear that you guys wanted to broadcast. So if you want to broadcast, having a speaker, a tracking system, I mean, this is stagnant. One of the problems is this room is so big, right? And so we would have, when we were looking at it, we were looking at mounting cameras at like all walls. That system was, I think, somewhere around 15,000 to 20,000 dollars. And so it isn't, it so to add that on all four, this was, this room is too big for that. I mean, I shouldn't say it's too big, but it it would cost us more. So the the ability for broadcast is, if it's not, if we're going beyond lip service, that we're on a camera, then we have to actually, people need to be able to see your face. They need to be able to see the person speaking's face. They need to have actual clarity and sound. It needs to be able to, it need, when you, the best, if you take a look at that camera and it it doesn't see my face, it just sees, especially with these masks on, you barely know who's talking. And so if you're going to request broadcasting as a permanent activity of the city, it should be done with enough clarity that it is beneficial. Otherwise, we could do audio and it would have the same exact impact, and it would actually significantly reduce the cost. I mean, I think you can audio it and it would be perfectly fine. But if you want visual broadcasting, then, and that is a policy choice, you know, it's not a, it's not a necessary thing, but and and most councils in Grace Harbor County are not doing that, except for this period of time. So you don't have to do it. But if you're going to do it, do it right, because no one's going to put any money towards it for the next 10 or 15 years. So pick an option that works. Well, the the reason that council chambers, it's around 13,000 dollars to fix the council chambers, the reason for that, and it doesn't decrease, we we would take out all of the seating that exists there right now, so you would put these type of chairs in, so it would actually probably fit exactly the same amount of people, actually, we could fit everybody here. But the reason for the council chamber fix is to make sure that there is always six feet of space between council members. We, I suspect that this will not be the last incident of some kind of virus that will demand spacing and everything else. And so we're building into the future to allow council to meet downstairs with separation and distance. And and out of the entire amount of money, I I don't think, I think that's reasonable to, because we have to put all the cabling in and the mics, the mics will be fixed mics. And so when you're speaking, it will be toned to your voice. So I obviously I may speak lower or quieter than somebody else, and the mic will pick you up, which, because it's it's fixated towards your, towards your voice. And so that's, you know.
So I would suggest that this go to finance committee at the next meeting, and we bring it back to you with the recommendation of finance committee.
That's a motion, that's good for me.
Is that a motion?
Do we need a motion?
I don't know if you need a motion or not, but I'm okay with it.
If it's a motion, I second it. If not, I support it.
Okay, I'll take that as a motion by Councilman Trimble and a second by Councilman Bryson. Is there any further discussion?
I I just want want to encourage the finance committee to look at if we need better mics to pick up our voices, and let's see what that option alone would cost, because I'm seeing almost 72,000 dollars here on the council chamber option one, and option two is, you know, 26,000. But that view that you see on the screen of us looking at the whole council and mayor on on the U shade is exactly what we get on TVW for some of our legislative committees. You don't get a camera trained on an individual committee member. And so you do on the floor of the House and the Senate, but not in a lot of the committees. And so we are no better off, no worse off for the view than what you see on TVW for committees in the legislature. But if the sound is an issue, I'm all for looking at the more minimal cost of investing in in better mics, and then I think we just need to train ourselves and each other to speak more clearly into those mics. But I think that's a lower-cost option that I I think should be viewed by the finance committee.
I just want to be clear that option one and option two, that is the difference. That's what it says.
Do we have any idea what this might look like? I mean, as far as the council chambers?
Yeah, yeah, we, Mr. Olden and I watched it and measured it. So what it will look like is is it'll take the council chambers as it is. Right now, you guys have three on one side and four on the other. That space will be kind of doubled, it'll go all the way down. And what we have, what we measured is it'll go just to the door on one side, and it'll go all the way down on the other side. All the seats will be removed, the the seating, which is actually not a bad idea anyway because it's difficult to get in and out of those seats. And then we'll use the chairs that we have, something like this, and space them in. The the we would like to keep this camera here and the system that we have in place here for two reasons. One is the court. The court comes in and it allows the court to come and do their work here without disrupting the council chambers and having it more situated for them. But also, if there is overflow, if there are a lot of people, or if people want to see it broadcast, that we can have this room open to allow for that to occur as well. So to talk about capacity, there is plenty of capacity downstairs if we take the chairs out for a normal meeting. But if there is, you know, 30, 40, 50 people who want to be here, we would also have this as the overflow. And then we could eat, do it one of two ways. The the video capacity is to allow them to either choose if they want to speak from here, or they can come downstairs and speak. So, all right. Is there any other discussion?
Would we use the old orange chairs in in the parks?
No. Let's watch. It's raining.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
So, Clarence Keating, I'm watching the the live stream at the same time right now. Is it what I'm looking at right now, what I would be seeing with the center camera, the getting the entire council chamber, all seven members, the mayor, and anyone else up on the dance with clear, largest microphones are being used, clear audio coming through? Is that the, is that the plan by the chairman?
Under option one, no. Under option two, this is what we would be looking at.
Okay.
Option, yeah. I was going to say the the option one would allow us to have full visibility, I mean, full facial recognition and to see the speaker, because one of the problems we have here is we never see the speaker.
Yeah, I I would agree with what I believe our council would say is that what I'm looking at right now, as long as it's clear flow of audio or apparently getting the needed closed captioning done, I think is fine. But what I'm seeing right now is very similar to one of the first examples of what we saw in live streaming on the on the harbor, which was the Grace Harbor County Commissioners. As a reporter, I was able to watch that, I was able to follow along, I was able to pull quality audio for a newscast on it, get more than filled indeed, being able to follow, being able to hear, being able to see. I would agree with Councilman with the the estimate on the on the state system, each individual council member. I don't know that that's that's necessary. I think what we what we have going right now, what I'm looking at, as long as the audio is clear and the closed captioning taken care of, that would be an acceptable solution to webcasting and to stream and to live streaming.
Anybody else? Okay, with that, all those in favor of referring to the committee, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? We are award of bid for resurface of road. Is there a motion?
I'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion and a second to allow the, I'm sorry, I need to find the, the award of 85,349 dollars to, from field construction for the placement of 1830 yards of surface rock on 61 stations of Forest Roads in the city forest. Is there a second?
Yes, this is the project I I mentioned earlier, and it will require, I just want everybody to be aware that this would require a supplement supplemental budget change of 25,000 dollars for the for the forest budget. I explained it in detail earlier. I don't see, this needs to happen, so obviously I'm in support of it, but I just want to make sure that everybody understands that's not currently in the budget. We will be amending the budget to reflect that.
So would we wrap this all up and we do the supplemental budget later?
Twenty twenty-one.
One supplemental for all the.
Yes. Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We are at offer, we are at the Springbrook contract. Is there a motion?
I'll so move.
Is there a second?
No second.
There is a motion and a second. Chief, do you want to, I think you've you've already discussed it at a prior meeting, but just in case.
Well, this is, this has to do with city hall. This is.
This is bias.
This is the software that city hall uses for all of our, I believe, our payroll and accounting and so on and so forth. It used to be called Bias, it's moved to Springbrook. Springbrook is doing a upgrade, putting everything into the cloud. It also allows for remote, I guess, entry into the system from, so I guess people could work from home if they'd be, which is one of the, one of the things that the city was looking at as far as, hey, when we're doing things, if we're able to work from home during another pandemic or whatever it might be. So what they've done is they come out and gave us a certain price, and they said if you do this now, basically, we're getting the price for for 12 months for 16 months. We're getting four months free, is basically what it is. And so, but we we need to make that decision. And so I have taken that to the mayor, I've taken it to the distributor, and I guess at this point, I'm bringing it to the council for some type of decision. And Doug's response to me was, at some point, we're probably going to need to do this, so why wouldn't we do it now? And we don't need to pay until, I believe, it's December or January. So that's where that's where the four months comes in, so.
Does anyone have any questions or further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Chief. We are now at the agreement between the IAFF and the City of Monteseno. First, let me ask the council if the council requires an executive session. We did discuss this at the, one of our meetings in September. Okay, so I'm going to recap, and if anybody wants to make a motion thereafter, consistent with my recap, that would be great, unless somebody else would like to recap. Okay. So the City of Monteseno would like to, I'm sorry, enter into a agreement between IAFF Which ha, the, with the union and which is a package of different things. I'm just going to summarize what that package would be. First, it deals with wages. In 2021, it would be 2% paramedic incentive retro to 1121. In 2022, it would be a 2.5% increase. In 2023, it would be a 2.5% increase. Then there is a section on insurance. For 2021, there will be no change, this is in the insurance coverage or in other related working conditions, such as the sharing of premium costs. Effective on 1122, the insurance coverage for employees and dependents will be shifted to the NWFFT 1500 Plan High Deductible. The city will pay 100% of employee premiums when coverage shifts to that plan. Premiums for dependents under that plan will continue to be split on a 95-5% basis, employer paying the 95%, except that in no event will employees be required to pay more than $80 per month towards the health insurance premiums. Effective on 1122, the city will pay 3,000 into an agreed upon Viva account on behalf of each bargaining unit member who is employed on 1122. Beginning on 1123, the city will pay 160 dollars monthly into the above referenced Viva account on behalf of each bargaining unit member. The city agrees to create the senior captain position. The senior captain position is a duty assignment and will receive premium pay of 5% of the individual's rate of pay during the assignment. A senior captain may be assigned when and for the duration that the city through its, excuse me, the language was changed to employer, within the department in the exercise of its civil discretion, determines it is in the best interest of the department. The senior captain position will not be subject to regular backfilling requirements unless the employer deems it necessary. Additional provisions regarding the assignment may be developed through the Labor Management Committee. We, we will agree to add the following language to the CBA. In the event, backfilling vacancies, sick leave and vacation leave. In the event of a vacancy from sick leave, vacation, or true vacancy in a 24-hour position, a good faith attempt shall be made to fill the vacancy with voluntary coverage by a full-time member of local 1862 day shift positions may be filled on a voluntary basis on the discretion of the employer. Stilling or adjusting for long-term vacancies will be subject to temporary assignment of coverage by the employer, subject to its request to bargain between management and the union. The other component that I did not, that was not in the material sent to you, but is, has been previously approved by the council, there was a prior MOU that was approved by the council as to the full-time members being able to sell voluntarily add, I think, an increase as to their retirement. And and that was approved by this council previously, but they wanted it part of the CBA, which was, it has no financial impact as to the contract.
So I'd move to authorize the mayor to sign the agreement between the City of Monteseno and the International Firefighters Affiliated, Local Number 1862, retroactive to January 1st of 2021 through December 31st of 23.
Second.
There is a motion, motion by Councilman Trimble and a second by Councilman Bryson to authorize the mayor to sign the agreement between the local 1862 IAFF and the City of Monteseno. Is there a discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay, with that, the Greater Grace Harbor item is in the agenda for introductions. I believe they will be present for presentation at the next meeting. And for action, please let me know if you have any questions about that contract. And I'm going to move on. There are no orders, decisions, or resolutions, so now we are a public comment again. Is there? Is there anyone that would like to make public comments at this time? Hearing none, we'll move on to council comments. Uh, Councilman Carroll, would you like to start us off?
Certainly. I appreciate the council and mayor's efforts tonight to resolve this issue of restructuring the police, or the fire department. And, and I also appreciate the foresters' energy in putting together the package of roadwork that we need to do up there.
I have nothing tonight. Councilman Wood?
Uh, Stephen Helen, thank you. You seem to volunteer for everything. And I, I think we would be much less rich as a community without everything you do. So, you know, fossils, library, everything else. So, thank you for that. It's always good to see you. Second thing, I want to thank the mayor for clarifying, you know, the introduction of the, uh, the restructuring options. That's an, that's an important clarification. And I'll look for something to promote a big blowout sale and, and on the books. And I think that's it.
Thank you. Councilman Cook?
Uh, yeah, I'd like to thank Councilman Trimble, the finance committee for all that they're taking on right now. It's a bizarre time for the city, having a lengthy opening in the chief financial officer position. It goes without saying that that is a very important position, needs to be filled. And I would, you know, urge the city to, to move on that and to move on the fire department's position, the fire chief position as quickly as they can. I look forward to discussing the budget and also would thank Forester Hyner for his report today and the brief meeting that we had with the forestry committee. And, you know, as someone who's having to, to watch this from afar and listen in and speak from afar and do want to come up with a way that we can allow people to, to view the meetings and hear what we're saying, hear what we're discussing as, as clearly and as real time as possible. And so, I, I look forward to continuing that discussion on those suggestions on improvements to the council chambers that were brought forth.
Thank you. Councilman Trimble?
Nothing.
Councilman Bryson?
Just a couple of things. Regarding the public meeting and, and the fire department structure, I want to thank everybody that showed up and gave their input tonight. We've made some strides in the communication. I think that's important. I'm glad to get their contract wrapped up and then we will move on to some other important steps in getting a couple of people hired down there and then moving on to working on a chief. So, thank you, everyone, for your work on that. As far as finance committee, um, I, I feel like without a CFO in place, it is gonna be a very challenging process working through the budget. So, I would ask the other council members, if you have questions or concerns about a line item, please bring them to us as soon as possible so that we can get you timely answers. Because it may not be as, as easy as just looking to our left and asking the person that's there. So, I think we all want it to go as smoothly as possible. So, don't hesitate to ask.
Councilman Scaramica?
First of all, I want to, again, thank the HEPS. Because it seems like every time you come to a council chamber, we have to thank you for something that you do. So, it's getting to be a habit. Thanks again. And it's, it's nice to get beyond the, the contract. I mean, really, at this point now. It just feels like we've, we're really moving. I mean, we've got some problems to solve. But like I said earlier, we've got all our normal business and then we have all these incoming missiles that just keep hitting us. And we never knew we'd be losing two staff members five months ago. You know, things just happen, happen. So, we have to deal with those as we can. And geez, sometimes it's just overwhelming. And there's just so much we can get done and things tend to slow down. So, everybody's gotta be real patient. We'll move forward. That's it.
Thank you. Um, uh, I appreciate the council's efforts to help their, especially finance. You guys have been awesome in dealing with the various components of the, running the city. I certainly could not have done the pieces that I have been able to do without the management team and without, actually, I would, I would say Councilman Trimble. I cannot express my appreciation level to you enough. That being said, I am a little aghast at the, the town hall that occurred. I thought that the people who spoke in the, from the public were very well reasoned. I thought they talked about exploring options and making good decisions, focusing on the city and doing what was best for the fire department. And, and, and in doing that, being best for the city and, and using money wisely. When I heard your council positions, what I didn't hear is, hey, we don't need to deal with this right now. What I heard was hire somebody immediately. And, and I am like going, what happened to weighing money issues? What happened to assessing what to do in the future? What happened to making deliberative and conscious choices after good discussion and debate? The fire department budget has been a problem for the city for over a decade. And yet, there doesn't seem to be anybody interested in coming down to assess where we are and how we can be better and how we can move on and make sure we have a healthy fire department. The R F A, from my perspective, was never on the table. The merger and contract was never on the table. But there were options that people had raised and should have been discussed. But that being said, I think it's completely irresponsible for the council to not have a discussion and weighing of the good and the bad, the pros and the cons of options. I think it is terrible not to look at the fire department's budget and say, how can we make sure they're sustainable? So, we have a fire department in twenty years. I think that we have a history as a council, not this council particularly. And I don't, I don't think it's this council. But I think as a city, we have a history of dealing with issues for the next year without any kind of, of long-term planning or thinking, which is why we result in problems that are financially distressing. I would say that this council has been magnificent in public works, in forestry, in police, in trying to make plans for what can look, what we can look like in twenty years. And I think it's an emotional reaction that we have with the fire department. And because there is a tremendous amount of political pressure being put to bear, and I think it is irresponsible of any elected official not to actually have a considered discussion. And I am disappointed in the comments that were made by the council, not by the public. I thought Rick Watson and Scott Booze and Pat Harrington made measured and appropriate statements. And they said, let's think about this. Let's discuss this. And that's not what I heard. And so, from the members of this table. And so, I rarely have criticism of this council, because I think you guys are phenomenal. And you have worked very hard for years. And you continue to work very hard. But I would ask that you consider that this comment and that you, you know, we've, since, since Councilman Wood is the one that's going to be getting us kind of moving in this process, that as we get moving in this process, that you take some time to consider some options. So, with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second. There's a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Councilman Cook.